Order of the Hubbardson Select Board on Monday, October 20th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Reminder to all who are present, this is being digitally recorded, so please be respectful of each other as you are speaking as well as you as you are listening. For the people who, I think it's just you, haven't been here before, what we're trying to initiate based on our first meeting is when you, if you wish to speak on anything or have something to say, we'd like you to go up to the podium if you would at that time and give your name and so forth. It can be a little bit more formal that way. That also allows the camera to get you through as well as seen and being heard, so if we can remember that, we'd appreciate it. Okay, Katie, your announcements?
Sure. All right, so we got a bunch of them. So first off, coming up this Thursday, we have at the library, the Oogie Spooky Bedtime Storytime at 5:00 PM. This is at the Hubbardson Public Library. All are welcome. And again, that's this Thursday at 5:00 PM, the Oogie Spooky Bedtime Story. Then on Friday, we have two items. First off, at the library again, we have the Dungeons and Dragons, the Teens and Queens. This starts at 6 o'clock. And then there's also the trunk-or-treat going on at the Hubbardson Center School from 6 to 8. And the trunk-or-treat is put on by the PTO, and it is $5 a bag to go around and I guess you vote for what's best and, you know, for trunks to win prizes and all kinds of fun things. And they do that every year. Then coming up on Saturday, there is a 60s and 70s dance at the Rod and Gun from 7 to 10. This is put on by the Friends of the Senior Center. It is $10 per person to enter. They have a cash bar, they have raffles, and all kinds of good things going on there. This money goes all towards the Senior Center. And again, it's a 60s and 70s dance at the Rod and Gun from 7 to 10 on the 25th. And it's $10 a person. Then on the 26th, we have the Halloween Parade, which is great if you have little kids or big kids, you know, nobody judges, that want to march in a parade down Main Street. They line up at the fire station starting at 12:30. The parade starts at 1:00, and this is Station 1 down on Main Street across from Mr. Mike's, the gas station. And they march down to the school, and then afterwards, there's a little party at the school, and Eddie Whitman usually performs. It's fun, it's great. They shut down the street usually, or at least half the street, depending on how many kids show. The weather's supposed to be good, so that will be a plus. And they're escorted by police and fire. It's a super fun, little cute thing. And if you don't have kids, come down and, you know, wave at the kids as they walk by. They always like to see people waving at them. What they ask for is a bag of candy to be donated. They collect that and they give it away to, back to the kids, obviously, one way or the other, whether it's for that day or trick-or-treating. The parade starts at 1:00, but again, lineup is 12:30. And again, all are welcome. October 31st is Halloween, just in case nobody knew it. That's when we do trick-or-treating. There's a block party that starts at 4:00. It's right in the police station, Senior Center, Public Library parking lot. Bill Shea is going to help sponsor that. There's a DJ this year.
Yep. Just this number year.
DJ. Yep, DJ. And then Rieta does the hot dogs. The Lions do the, usually drinks and such.
Cider and the water.
Yeah, cider and like hot cocoa or whatever. They give water, coffee.
And Bill won't be there.
No, Bill won't be there, but he is still sponsoring.
With his cars, right?
Yeah, he won't be there with his cars, but he still is sponsoring. There's some fun new additions with some skeletons of sorts that are being built that, just in case you haven't seen on social media, they've been kind of making their rounds. But yes, that starts at 4:00. Trick-or-treating is 5 to 8. Main Street is very busy, so if you aren't trick-or-treating, don't go that way. Don't go that way anywhere in any town. Just stay away from all Main Streets in any town on Friday night. Again, just for safety purposes, just don't do it. So anyway, that's October 31st. November 1st, which is a Saturday, is a turkey raffle for the Rod and Gun. It's at 7:00 PM. They do have a 50-50, and they have some information on Facebook. They get a little flyer with all the different tables and stuff. But again, that is November 1st. Then we have, ooh, I missed one. I'm sorry, I skipped one. October 27th, let's go back a little bit. I apologize because it's on a different paper. There is a book club at the library. That is a Monday at 6:00 PM. So again, a book club at the library on October 27th. I apologize for out of order. Back into November, let's just screw you all up. November 23rd, on, at the Williamsville Chapel, is the Hubbardson Historical Society's Thanksgiving Market. It is from noon to 3:00. If you go down there, you will find a whole lot of local farmers and vendors down there set up, and it's a great place to get some fresh things for your Thanksgiving dinner. On November 30th, I know nobody wants to think about this, seeing as it's not even Halloween yet, but we will be having our tree lighting at 5:00 PM at the first meeting house. And then I also want to remind people to start thinking about signing up for the Hubbardson Lightfight because the applications are open and we are accepting them. And that is a sign up of November anyway, so just starting to put that information out there. Yes?
Do you accept municipal entries?
Yeah. I always.
So the constant entry.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the park department actually, yeah, they enter for.
I'd like to request a budget item.
Be quiet. All right, so that's all I got for right now. All right, moving on.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements or please and reports from anyone?
What time? Nope, Katie, Katie Delibery stopped. Katie, what time was the farmer's market for the?
The farmer's market is noon to 3:00.
Thank you.
At the Williamsville Chapel on the 23rd.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone here for open session? This will move us to a public hearing on the Brigham Street Heavy Vehicle Exclusion. Essentially, from the board's point of view, what we are being asked to do is to approve the submission of the Brigham Street Heavy Vehicle Exclusion Request to Mass DOT as it will be presented. So that's what we, the motion would be when we get to that. So Tricia, would you mind filling us in on everything?
Yes. So this past year, Travis and I have worked with the Police Department of Mass DOT to have the top part of Brigham, so from Evergreen up to Main Street, part of a heavy commercial traffic exclusion that would not allow any large vehicle over 2 tons up that part of the road, especially since that road is to be paved. The culvert has been replaced. We would like to see it maintain its structural integrity as time goes on, as we know that especially that section is extremely narrow, where there is not enough room for a semi and a minivan, let alone a semi and an emergency vehicle or a school bus. I've seen them jockey for position on that part of the road as well. So the proposed reroute would be that they would turn onto Evergreen if they were coming from the Westminster end of Brigham, and the same if they were coming down 68. They would turn onto.
Old Princeton Road.
Old Princeton, onto Evergreen. That bridge that Mass DOT redid can handle the weight and the, you know, the traffic, the uptick in traffic, we'll see. You guys have copy of the counts, so you can see how busy that top part of Brigham is. MRPC with Travis did those counts for us. We also got speed from that, so you can also see how fast people are going. So everything is put together, everything is ready to go. I just need your signature.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions first? Okay, Tom, are you here for that?
Yes, please.
Why don't you lead us? Thank you.
I thought the committee, I thought the select paper went first.
Pardon me?
I thought the select paper went first.
I think we've exhausted our current comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. First off, my compliments. Good job here. This facility is a real upgrade.
Tom, would you give your name, please?
Tom Robinson, 5 Brigham Street.
Thank you.
I'm right at the tight spot on the road. And over the years, it's been pretty, pretty rough. A lot of ever-increasing large trucks, 20-yard, 24-yard dumping trailer trucks, subtrucks.
Tom, one second, please. Travis couldn't hear us, so I don't, I don't want you to be dealing with that, so.
Travis is on, is this?
Travis.
Go ahead.
Any reason, recap?
I don't see one.
Good. First off, what does the regulation say? When I looked at the meeting and I, or the agenda, I couldn't find like attachments that would display what it says. So I'd like to understand what it does, you know, what it says, what it does. And how, how does it get voted upon? I think I heard you say you're, you're voting to pass it to the DOT. And then what are they doing?
Once they receive our application along with all of the, I will say, evidence of why we need it, they are putting this in as an emergency because the road is in really tough shape. So they will take about a week and a week and a half to process it, and then they will let us know if it's passed or if they need supplemental information from us.
I always like to be prepared for the worst. What if it gets voted down? Is there an appeal process or?
There is an appeal process. There is an appeal.
With DOT?
With DOT. They come out and they actually do like a survey of the road where they take photographs and they, I guess, watch the road for a day or so to see the traffic and where we're coming from.
Tricia, could you give them a little bit of background that's actually in that big thing in terms of what has already been done before we are actually sending this thing in?
Right.
The traffic, et cetera, and all, everything, so he knows what led into that?
So everything that we collected for this packet to send to Mass DOT includes, but not limited to, maps of the topographic, so topographic maps of Evergreen and Brigham. Thankfully, they're very close together, so it was easy to capture the whole picture. Then on top of that, MRPC did count. So they put down lines that counted how many cars, how many axles went over the road, their speeds. And then they did the same thing for Evergreen as well. So we have those as well. The next step of the process is the dimensions and all of the information on the road itself. Travis provided for me both Brigham and Evergreen. And then they didn't require it because they were the ones who redid the bridge on Evergreen, but they required that information as well. But I didn't have to hand it in because it is literally the same project manager.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tricia.
One last question.
Go ahead.
As luck would have it, we are achieved here tonight. How's it getting enforced?
Excuse me?
How does it get enforced?
The same as any other traffic violation.
It's signage?
There'll be signage and then enforcement by, same way Berry Rhodes enforced.
Okay.
So yes, sometimes vehicles do, will slip through. I'm sure in the very beginning, we're going to have issues, so we'll, we'll increase patrols and try to.
Basically, educate them.
Educate them and increase patrol so that we can deal with it appropriately.
And we can begin with signage upon sub mill, so we don't necessarily have to wait. We'll talk to Chief and Travis about what that means for us in actual practice, but they don't stop you from posting the guidance.
I never, I never, excuse me, I'm helping. Kind of go around the corner and then you see the sign. Can we bring the signs up to Route 68, at least at the beginning? You know, so they see them before they turn in? These trucks are never going to be able to back down.
Right. So when I asked Mass DOT about the signage, she said that most of the times they're following their over-the-road maps. So my first phone call, along with, once I get that letter approval, I have to submit it to these mapping software for over-the-road truckers, because those are the guys that are coming through. Those, once the DOT exclusion goes in, those maps should trigger it, but every once in a while, you get a mapping software that doesn't talk to them, the GIS system. So those are the guys that are going to end up having to see the signs, but I will make sure I do my due diligence with mapping software and getting them the letter from Mass DOT.
Director Brown, do you have anything to add on this matter?
We have signs printed up already, and as for your signage prior to, there are signs I have made up stating truck route, which will be placed before you get to Brigham Street on Main Street, and then there'll be signs down at Old Princeton, and there'll be signs on Old Princeton pointing over to Evergreen, as there will be truck route signs from Brigham pointing to Evergreen. And then as you exit Evergreen, there'll be signs pointing to Route 68.
Needless to say, I think I'm strongly in favor of this truck exclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, is that indicated?
No, I'm good.
Anyone else have anything to say on terms of this? Board members?
I guess the only thing I would say is to thank Tricia and Travis for all the work on this.
Yes, absolutely. We appreciate that.
When we saw the documentation the other week, it was quite a bit of paperwork. Seems like a lot of hard work on that, and sounds like at least one resident on that road is going to be very happy with the modification. I imagine you're in good company?
I'd be glad to get petition or whatever.
I, I think we believe you. So.
Thank you, Tricia, for all your work.
Anything? Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Travis, thank you too.
Thank you, Travis.
All right, if there are no more questions or comments, then I would ask for a motion, and the motion is to approve submission of the Brigham Street Heavy Vehicle Exclusion Request to Mass DOT as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made on second. Is there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Okay. And let us know how you, how we do.
I will let you know. Luckily, it's not snail mail. She is, she told me just as soon as they say yea, get the letter signed and just email it to me, so.
All right. From here, we move to the consent agenda. I will go through it with everybody, and then if there are any holds, please let me Under Administrative Matters, we have the minutes of our, of October 6th meeting. Everybody was here. We have the Establishment of a Donation Account, Article 21. That was at June 2nd, 2025.
It's the first meeting house donation.
I beg your pardon?
It's the first meeting house donation that.
Yeah, it's meeting house, that's what we're talking about. Okay, thank you. And Authorization of a DE Amendment.
Digital equity. Digital enhancements.
And that's for the, that's the people down the road, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Under Appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me go through it, and then I'll be happy to go back to anything the board would like. Appointments, we have Jacob Weaver, Cable Advisory Committee, term to expire 6/30/2026. Mark Kreske, Planning Board Associate Member, term to expire 6/30/2026. Paul Sweeney, Council on the Aging, term to expire 6/30/2026. We have wage authorizations, excuse me. David Napolitano, Civilian Traffic Control Unit, term to expire 6/30/2026. He's a retired state trooper, for those of you who may have a question. Robert, how would you tell me?
Fagundes.
Fagundes. Civilian Traffic Control Unit, term to expire 6/30/2026. He's also retired police and state trooper. And Edward Glant, Seasonal Plow Operator, term to expire 6/30/2026, presently also a mark bus driver.
Mr. Chairman, could I take a swing at this prior to asking for holds?
Yes.
All right. I would just like to take a moment to explain what is on the consent agenda and why they are reasonably placed on the consent agenda. The meeting minutes of October 6th were drafted by Patricia. All of you were in attendance. It was our last meeting. The Establishment of a Donation Account is requested by our Town Accountant, Samantha Shatterton. It is simply to be able to turn the check, like the physical check, over to the bank instead of being in the treasurer collector's safe. It will not be, be spent until such time as the first meeting house group is brought together and established and determine what they are and are not doing with monies and the building in general. The Authorization of the Digital Equity Amendment is an additional $60,000. It's actually $59,000 something, something, something for digital enhancements to the first floor of the library. It is a joint grant that Patricia and I worked on for several months while we were working with the Massachusetts Broadband Institute. I am very happy that we, we got it. It was a part of a larger grant opportunity that we did not end up receiving, but even $60,000 worth of digital courses and additional pieces of equipment for students, people applying for jobs, and people looking to do work at the library will be really beneficial at this time, especially as we're working through it. Jacob Weaver is a person that is applying to be on the Cable Advisory Committee. I did meet him at the Taste of Hubbardson. Seems like a very nice person. This was not brought forth to the Cable Advisory Committee. Something I do want to work with the Chair and the Board on in the coming weeks and months is figuring out what our standard practice is for recommendations from boards. I personally don't think that the Select Board should be seeking recommendations, but you guys are the Select Board, and I think we should have that conversation because we've been very all over the place with who is getting a recommendation from a board, who isn't. That's something I think we should have an open conversation on at a later time. But neither Jacob Weaver seems like a nice person who is interested in cable advisory work, and we have plenty of seats on there. There are two, if not three more, even with Mr. Weaver's appointment. Mr. Kreske, Kressich, my, our friend, is up for the Planning Board Associate Member. He was very much unanimously supported by the Planning Board, and the Planning Board recommendation is outlined in the law. So that went to them as it was presented, and it had been in the past. There had been some issues regarding people and associate members going in front of the boards in prior years, so I really didn't feel like we should be dealing with any of those issues. And knowing that Mark is dedicated to the community, especially planning, I think that is a home run of an appointment, and they recommended it wholeheartedly. Mr. Paul Sweeney was here about 30 minutes ago for a meeting of the Cemetery Committee. He is a very well-known individual in town and has been supportive to the town all for many, many years. I do not believe this went in front of the Council on Aging, so if that is a concern and you would like it brought to the Council on Aging, I, we can hold it, and I will ensure that it gets brought up to them. For wage authorizations, Mr. Napolitano is a retired state trooper and one of the best bartenders at Wachusett. So he's a, he's a really nice guy, and I've actually enjoyed having conversations with him time and time again. If the chief is recommending him for civilian traffic control, I'm sure he is up to doing the job. Mr. Robert Fagundes is a former Hubbardson Police Officer and former state trooper himself. He is the gentleman that has stood up at the last couple of town meetings. He has a mullet. He may not anymore, but at the, that's, he was very well-spoken and spoke on several issues that were facing the town meeting at that time. He is presented today by the chief and has the qualifications to do the role. Both of those positions would be making $25 an hour. The third wage authorization is Mr. Edward Glant. He's a seasonal plow operator. He is also one of our mark drivers.
Correction, the hourly rate.
The traffic control unit is the current, is set at the current detail rate in the collective bargaining agreement with the union.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mr. Glant is $30 an hour. He's a nice guy, and Travis wanted to bring it up as we are having concerns with regional pay versus losing people to other communities, especially as we approach the winter. This is something that will be coming forward to the Select Board at the next, at your next meeting to look at for the whole DPW across the board, but I do need to kind of chew on some numbers a little bit before bringing that forward, hopefully at your November 3rd, but that does not affect Mr. Glant, who has a positive relationship with the town and the DPW. That is the consent agenda.
So Nate, I apologize, I was helping KP with something. Did you explain, and if you did, that's fine. I read through it. I don't need it for me, but did you explain the, we'll just say DE, so I avoid trigger words, and then, okay.
Yes, he went through.
I caught the donation one, and then the next thing I knew, we were on Jacob because I was answering, helping KP find the document, so, thank you. My apologies.
Does anyone on the board have any holds or any questions before I ask for a consent?
I do have one question about, you said the Cable Advisory Committee, there's plenty of room.
Yes.
The Planning Board, Mark went in front, that's all set. The Council on Aging, how many seats are actually open on there? Are we filling one and only, or?
I would have to check. We, I have no problem holding it and asking, talking to the Council on Aging. They meet, I believe, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, the only reason why I say is if we're gonna, if that is the role that we are going, you know, the road we're gonna go down, we should kind of start doing that rather than, but if there's like multiple seats, like the first one, there's multiple seats, so it's not like there's usually a line, like.
Looks like one according to the website.
One.
It says vacancy one, but there's no vacancy two, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have not spoken to them as we do need to have that conversation about if that is our standard practice, and, yeah, so if you would like to hold, Mr. Sweeney, I have no problem bringing it to the Council on Aging, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna have a problem, Mr. Sweeney, but I'd like to be consistent on things. That's my personal feeling, and I don't think that it's gonna be a huge deal if they only have one seat open. It's not like we're holding up form or anything. And one, two-week meeting, well, we'll have a meeting in what, like two weeks? Yeah, so it's not gonna wreck them either.
And Paul applied at a weird time, like.
Right in the middle or something?
So it's been, it's been a little bit anyway, so if, if the Chair does accept the hold tabling of Mr. Sweeney, I don't see an issue putting it on the next meeting.
So there wouldn't be a problem with Paul, right?
Well, I think Paul can always go to the next COA meeting.
Yeah.
Even as whoever the public can say, hey, I'm interested, and I just came to see how things are going before I get placed on the board.
Yeah, he, that, nothing's going to stop anyone from going to any of the meetings and, you know, participating, you know?
Especially just to kind of preemptive this conversation, especially now that it's automated to a certain extent, I think we should figure out exactly what happens. Like if someone applies, does it then come to me for acknowledgement and then go to the board, or?
Yeah, like some kind of chain of command.
We'll talk about that, not even a chain of command, a workflow of sorts.
Yes.
Like, and we can talk about that at a later time, but we don't have that in place at this moment.
Does any, any other board member have any feeling one way or the other in terms of pulling Paul off of the consent agenda at this time?
No, I like, I support what Katie said, that the notion of if we're gonna do one for one, we should do for all, so I like the consistent practice.
Okay.
And again, it doesn't, I don't think the COA is likely a highly contentious board. I don't think they're getting stuck on, you know, four to four on a regular basis, so I don't think holding off a week, and it gives them the opportunity to go to the meeting, meet everybody, and make sure it's all that he wants to do, and I'm sure the board will have no problem.
Yeah.
Chris, Peter, you both okay with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll, before we have the motion on the consent agenda, we'll pull Paul off of the lead list that we will be making the motion for. So if there are no other holds or questions, could I get a motion for unanimous consent for the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passed. That leads us to our, to our old business. First thing we have is carryover from the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Ahead of this, I would like to note for the board that Mr. Shea did pull his name from consideration in a very positive fashion. He noted his, his happiness with the number of people that applied, noting that he had some. some prior commitments, then just pulled his name to allow other people to serve at this time. So that is why Mr. Shea is no longer on the list.
Now, we have discussed this, but tonight, essentially, we want to agree on a number and also choose the people. So if the Board would like to jump in, any comments you have on that? Those are the issues. How many people do we think we should have?
Well, let's start with a number.
I suggest we make the number nine and approve all the people on the list.
Well, there's only eight.
I understand that.
Oh, and then pull Bill Shea from my, I'm like, I'm like, no, no, you're wrong, you're all wrong.
You're all wrong. Everybody's wrong.
I was like, I know I had to count.
If you were to make the number nine, I respectfully ask that the ninth appointee be a liaison of either the Select Board or the Town Administrator's Office, and to that, I suggest Mrs. Patricia Lo.
Doesn't that kind of, yeah, lucky you.
How does Mrs. Patricia Lo feel about that, should it a full plate?
I...
She's staffing it anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, right.
Patricia and Ava, this is just discussing right now, so you're not being yanked, okay? So you can certainly think about it. I have a question, again.
Oh, I thought I had a question up there.
Well, it's about what you just said.
Oh.
Do I have a full plate?
Do you wanna, do you wanna, interested in being a part of this, or is it a non-starter?
Not a non-starter. It's just, this would be a discussion that I would have to have, not in a public meeting and with members of my family.
Okay.
Six, you need six.
So it's a number for now?
It's a me. It's a hard me.
Fair enough.
You could also go the route of doing the Select Board liaison as a voting member.
For nine?
Five. Five's a quorum for nine.
Two-thirds.
No, majority.
One more than half.
Yeah, so you have five.
You're messing, you're really trying to mess with my math in my head, aren't you, Jeff? Jeez.
No, I just have a little bit of a reservation in terms of a larger committee, because that makes it more difficult to get everybody.
Together.
Together. And we've had the experience with our other, other committees that we've had, they've not been able to get business done because they can't get a quorum. So that's my only reservation, not only of the, of all eight, but going to nine. So I just throw that out as a concern, that the larger we get, the more, the more difficult it might be to be able to have them do what we want them to do, but that's my feeling.
I, I agree with that, but at the same time, where this is such a unique property that we're, it's not unique, but you know what I mean? It's something different we're trying to do. I would much rather see a wide swath of people, rather than we narrow it down and then we get people that are very, like, cause like, a lot of these people overlap with CPC, Historical Committee.
Historical Council.
Yeah, but it, it's all like, so you start to get a very focused group if we pick certain ones, and there's nothing against those groups, I'm not saying there's anything bad, but you start to get a very narrow view, rather than kind of widening it out to allow others, you know, other thoughts to get in there for a different point of view of what the possibilities could be.
Another, another point to make, again, for purposes of running a committee, assuming we went to nine, or if we don't go to nine, we'd have to consider seven now, because eight is an even number, and you don't want to have an even number when you're taking votes.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
My other suggestion, if Patricia does want to stay as just a helper, is that you have a member of your Board specifically qualified to aid in this type of building, and that member has, at least in my opinion, expressed interest in working on the building, and that would be Mrs. Young, who has experience as a...
They already have ideas.
As a landlord and has ideas, so if you were to go nine, a Select Board liaison with a voting role could be your ninth member, allowing you to accept all members as suggested.
What, the quorum would be five for nine?
Yeah, a quorum would be five for nine, so you're...
But you don't want an even number when everybody's present.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, let's also remember, this is gonna be something that likely will evoke emotions.
Oh, it's gonna take a long...
And with that, keep in mind that there's likely to be a few contested votes.
There will be.
Right? When you get to a point of, now what?
Well, regardless, yeah, cause people, like I said, you have a lot of people on this, they overlap with very specific groups, so you will have a very like-minded, and that's my only concern with the group, not that all of them, cause like, there's a couple names on here, I, like Lori, I don't know her, she's seemed, like, she was a neat person. That was the one that lived on...
We have her application.
Yeah, she was the one that lived across the street.
Yeah.
But yeah, so, but like, a lot of these names, they either have been in there, or they're on the Historical Society, or they're part of, like, the same kind of groups, so, yeah, and that's the only, I just, if you, if we narrow it down, I kind of do like Chris's idea of just going all, because then you, you kind of widen it out, but yet you still have some of the people that have been entrenched forever here that are very grounded, you know, to, to at least have a clue of what the building is and what it could be.
I think we only have, what, seven and a half or so months before, I guess eight months, before the end of the fiscal year, right? So hopefully, they get in a couple meetings, and by then, we'll have an idea of how it's going, and if we come to the problem where, you know, we're just either at a deadlock or, you know, nine's just not working, we can always reconfigure before the next fiscal. But to KP's point, you know, we have nine people interested. I don't know, the last time we had nine people interested in anything.
I know.
You know, kudos goes to Nate and his team for recruiting people and getting the word out, getting people interested, cause this is huge. I mean, I don't even know if there's been like, two months in a row where we had like, nine interested parties through everything. So this is awesome, but I have the same reservations, right, is what do you do when you have nine people in a room? What happens, you know? I think especially during holiday time, it's really hard to get people to show up to a meeting in the first place, so with the guidance of these meetings too, I think it's gonna be really important, whether, you know, it's a Select Board member on the committee, or even initially, if Nate can attend the first couple committees, to make sure that they try to target on keeping their meetings succinct, and maybe to like, an hour, hour and a half each, so that people's time is respected and we make sure they stay, they stay engaged and excited about the process.
Heather, I was planning, before Nate's anything, I was planning to go to the first couple of committee meetings. As a clerk, that is clerked for many different boards, with many different personalities sitting on the boards, and, not to toot my own horn, but I'm pretty good about keeping them on track, motivated, you know?
And succinct. Moving forward.
And succinct, like, I don't want to be there any longer than we need to be, let's keep it going, people, so.
Well, you know, we can't predict the future, and we've got eight people on this list that have enough interest to send in applications and, you know, write letters for this position, so I think we, I think we, we put them all on a nine, on a nine-person committee, we add one more person to it, and see how it goes.
I, yeah, I agree.
Mike, I'm gonna pick on you respectfully, respectfully, because you're also on the list, so this would be a committee that you would be on. Do you have any feelings in terms of what we're saying, talking about?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Stolff, I'm on my grid. You've already expressed many things, cause I've, I've either come to meetings or on a couple of committees, and so the odd number, definitely support that, because this is somewhat of a lot more interest than the routine administrative things that other committees and needs to be covered, so Chris's comment regarding, hey, let's go nine, seems like a big number to me, but in this case, it seems like it could be beneficial and workable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I would like to point out one thing that Mr. Stolff does have knowledge on. The Open Space Committee has what I believe is 27 members, and that's a, that's a joke, but they do have a large number of members, and they work out just fine, and it actually has strengthened the committee.
Not to play counter here, but just keep in mind, the difference is a lot of people on Open Space are probably all going the same direction, where this is gonna elicit a lot of emotional responses, so that, that might feel like a breeze, and then you go to the nine member where everyone has a very...
Yeah, very different ideas.
So, and I, I get it, right, the Select Board at the end of the day will have a very large play in those, some of the finals and some of those pieces, but just keep in mind that I think passions are going to be present.
I can feel it coming.
That's what makes good discussions.
It does.
Should have gone on an 11-member Board once, and it was awful.
You almost have to think about how many facets that building's gonna have to it, that having a bigger group will take care of all those different facets and bring in different experiences of like, how to maintain the building, what events to hold, or what have you, so.
And we don't have to tell them what to do, they could subcommittee themselves out and almost never meet as a whole, like, cause there are going to be different projects that are completely not even in the same room as the other.
At the risk of putting the cart before the horse, though, was the committee, initially, the committee was put together to, the idea of getting ideas of how to use the facility, et cetera, but we're also, and we'll be talking about it later, but we're also talking about groups already want to use it, so my concern is who has the keys to the kingdom? In other words, who has the responsibility for the groups that are gonna be using it, meaning the heat's on, who opens the door, who's responsible for locking it, who has the, and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be falling on you guys.
I'm not raising my hand.
So obviously, the committee will have to have offices and everything else, but is this something that they're gonna have oversight on? Because I think that's a very important thing to be going into before we start using it for any group, who's responsible.
If you note in your packet that I provided, there is a proposed temporary, I called it a policy, but it doesn't need to be a policy, outlining what I proposed as temporary use of the building until such time as the group determines what they are doing, just so that we can make decisions about allowing people to use or not use the building until such time as the group decides what they want to do and how it goes, and if those type of decisions need to come forth to the Select Board, we'll have time to do that, and I just followed the same standard rules as all of the other buildings, certificate of insurance, don't burn the place down.
Yeah, someone will have to open the doors and whatnot.
And I have no problem coordinating that.
Yeah.
Open them and close them.
Close them, lock it, yeah, yeah. But if you don't use, if you don't use the building, the, the problem is, is you've got septic, you've got water, you've got things that need to be used. If you don't use things, they break very quickly, especially in the wintertime, and if no one's going in there to check or to be using these things, no one's gonna know there's a problem either, until it's way too late. So that's part of the, I strongly suggest we allow at least local stuff to be done in there on a regular, so that way it can be used, and we're less likely to have catastrophic failures with this building.
If I could put, I'll come to you, Tom, but if I could put a hold on this, because now we're getting into the use of them, and that's gonna be later.
Yeah.
So that we can then, and...
Yeah, 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 nope, I agree.
Tom, go ahead.
A committee this size, I admire the people who step up, but it might take a while to get down to the end of the runway and get off. In the meantime, is this building protected? Fire alarms, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
That's all in there?
Yep.
Surveillance?
Non-surveillance, but it has fire alarms.
Smoke alarm.
Smoke alarm. I go in on a, right, a weekly basis just to check on everything, and...
Is it protected?
It's protected, and it's covered under the town insurance.
Well, I don't want an insurance check, I want a building.
Right, but that is another side of it, that the liability has to be covered just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a quick question on where the building's not gonna have somebody entering every day, the concern for me is losing your heat, if the heat goes out.
They do make alarms that...
They do. Yes, they do. They make alarms for the oil tank, when the oil gets low, they might also possibly have a sensor on it for temperature. That's, I'm thinking of the town sensor.
Yeah, no, they have them. We use that.
The other thing too is, once it came into the fold of the building, Peterson reached out, that's who does our oils, if we wanted to set them up on automatic delivery.
Well, I mean, why wouldn't you?
Right.
All the other town buildings.
All the other town buildings are on automatic delivery.
And we'll be able to get that discounted bulk rate.
Yep.
And one of the applicants is the only person I know that owns a heat gun, so we will...
I own like, three of them.
Okay, you never told me.
So we gotta put...
But you don't want to use that for that.
So, once, once we approve the committee, we need to get them on the heat tank right away, cause there should be some sort of notification for somebody if the heat goes out in that building, cause we're only, we're only checking it once a week.
Yeah, they do make, they do make sensors. I had to use one for a certain amount of time, just because no one was living in it to make sure that it...
Okay, again, that would also come under the use, so let's save it for later on. Are we agreeable that it's on nine, and even though Nate kind of volunteered you?
Well, first, he volunteered Trish, which...
Cause they have two great people.
Yeah, I'm fine with if Trish wants to do it, if Trish doesn't want to do it, I will gladly do it.
I think I can work that into the motion, and then you guys can have the flexibility. I'm writing you the motion simultaneously, so.
Thank you.
Assuming, Mr. Chairman, you're ready to accept the motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to finalize the First Meeting House Preservation Committee, Committee Charge with the amendments of changing the membership from five to nine, and adding a position for the, a Select Board member or their designee.
Town Administration?
I'd say with their designee.
Okay, either their, designee, okay.
And to make the following appointments, all expiring June 30th, 2026, Jonathan Brinker, Rick Green, Susan Worth, Michael Stolff, Betty Ann Sharp, Carl, Carol Whitney, Lori Ortiz Epino, Gary Cankis.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? I have a question in terms of their, their appointments are literally just basically six months, and then we might lose them.
I kind of liked that, in order just to see how it, how, when, and what happens.
Yeah, I, I agree with Nate. I think that's great, because you get the people the opportunity to, you know, get their feet wet and see how it goes, and...
And then, but they would then have to come up for reappointment.
It's something they decide, if they don't want to do, then, you know, they can move on, and we can find somebody else.
Annual reappointments are usually not a large hill to climb if you are doing the things that you are supposed to be doing as a member of any committee.
Okay. So, I had, any other discussion? Seeing none, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for that.
So you and Katie, can you figure that out?
Yeah, Trish gets her face.
Okay.
I really hope my husband's not watching this.
That's fine. Like, I guess, just don't worry about it.
Moving on to new business.
We got you.
Select Board Administrative and Department Liaison assignments. I'll ask Nate to speak on the form that we have on the table here, and then explain what Nate and I are going to be doing on this.
So, the last couple of years, I've always personally been a little bit confused by the liaisons, cause we would name them, and then forget about it for two years, and then name them. I believe if we structure the liaisons more as project-based or kind of topic-based, it will be easier for the different offices to know when to reach out for them, cause there are just a lot of projects that are kind of cross-departmental, and that makes it a little more confusing, because if something was, say, 48 Gardner Road, that suddenly, fire, Town Administration, Town Clerks, and then we're at quorum, and the liaison thing is out the window. So I proposed in front of us a way to break it up so that it's more project-based, and also gives a flexibility to the Chair or to be proposed to create liaison relationships as they come forward. It's obviously not something that would be policy-derived or written in stone, so it could be changed. It's obviously not something that would be policy-derived or written in stone, so it could be changed. But I think what I put in front of you is a decent start. I am fully honest that it might not be every single thing ever written out right there, but that's how I think would make it a little easier for, at the very least, my office to interact with different members in a liaison capacity.
And if I could chime in here, based on this, which I also support, that's fine. We're not gonna be assigning these tonight, cause that's, that's my falls to me. So what I would like with the board members is to take this piece of paper, okay, and give it some thought at home as to what your interests might be. Should they be different from the last list of liaisons? Generally speaking, if I was to recall, we're all on at least two and possibly three things. All of here, this is like a 21 and 22 list, but keep that in mind. And if you could let me know what your first, second, and third choice might be, that would be a help for me then to try to... Can't say I please everybody, but when I have to assign you.
Should we go this route? I will send out this list as presented or as amended and the last liaison list that we had, so that you can make your suggestions or your potential choices.
Just let me know what your one, two, three interests would be, okay? But we're not gonna be dealing that tonight, so gives you a chance to look at the new format and think about it. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure. Can I add a couple of questions slash comments?
Go ahead.
You knew what I was gonna ask. So I always put this out every time we talk about liaisons. If you rewind, you know, three years of talking about this, I put this out every time. I, my reservation about liaison assignments is sometimes people go to the liaison and then they skip going to the town administrator, right? So we end up having two people who are kind of overseeing something. So that's, that's always a concern. Again, if that's something the town administrator's currently comfortable with and the board's currently comfortable with and we think all those boundaries can be respected, I think that's perfectly fine. I can tell you, personal experience, I've had times where there was someone who got injured on duty. They called their liaison, they told the liaison about it. And the department head called me and asked me why the paperwork wasn't done. I was like, what paperwork? Oh, he's been injured for three days. Beats me, right? So just making sure that both department heads and departments and boards and committees, as well as all of the, the select board staff know that, you know, this is made to assist with community, should not replace it. So it still has to go to the proper channels. We can help with that sometimes, but it still has to, you know, you can't just call one of us and say, hey, Chief says, hey, my officer got injured. Oh, great. I'm sorry to hear that. What can I do for you? But we're not gonna file the claim for you.
That does, this, the new way that I'm presenting would also solve that problem in a, not even a problem. That has not been a problem. We have a wonderful relationship between the town administrator's office and the board. I know you guys have in past years as well with different town administrators and different boards. That has never been a problem. I don't see it being a problem. But this structure also would solve that by having it be more project and sort of idea or theme-based than department-based, cause you would then not think, oh, I should call the liaison. It's more project-themed idea.
Right, and then, sorry to...
I was gonna say, and in the past, one of the functions of the liaison, at least in all the years I've been on the board, is you're basically representing the board to these groups and kind of finding out what's going on. And the liaison is to come back here to let us know. As opposed to being someone who's gonna then go to Nate. That's not our role. It's to see, for example, I've been on the council in the aging and, you know, I check in with Claude here and I go stop and see how they're doing and if something comes up, I would share it. That's what I see is the liaisons have been doing over the years. And it still would be, so consequently, I don't see it as a problem as we're talking about.
They are select board liaisons, so in theory, in concept, it would be a liaison to the board, not necessarily replacing a structural staff relationship.
So the, the other comment I have on here is that some of these things, I don't think need to be on here cause you already have seats at the table. Municipal campus, we already have a seat, you know.
But this is when we named that seat.
But we already have it as an appointed seat, don't we?
For which one?
So like EDC, we appoint someone to, wasn't Katie on EDC? So like, she was the ADC, EDC person. I understand that's in the works and everything else, but like, the campus thing. So I think it's different, though, being a liaison and having a seat. Like, those ones actually have a voting member as opposed to you represent this concept.
In my mind, I was having it be the same person. If that is something we want to move back on, that is fine as well. I, yeah, in my mind, it was the same person.
So I have one more question. So I know, of course, our board is wonderful and we would never overwhelm anybody, including staff members, on purpose. However, it could happen. Is the staff okay with this concept? Where, you know, if I'm the budget treasurer or accountant person, budget reserves and capital plan coordination, and this board tells me that it's my job to know what's going on and I show up and start asking 400 questions and asking for documents, are they going to want to kill me? Or are they gonna be like, thank you so much, we've been waiting all this time for someone to come ask questions?
That depends.
Let me rephrase my question. Have you ran this through your staff yet?
No.
Okay. Before this circles back to us and after you work with it with Jeff and even if we submit ideas, can we make sure the staff buys into this idea and is comfortable with it? And make sure there's, see if there's any of the parameters that they may wish to see in place so that, you know, we're facilitating what we're hoping to do, which is the communication, but we're protecting them so that, you know, if they're on here multiple times or various things, they're able to do their job and not talk to five of us every week.
As the lead budget development person for the municipality, I can state that I would love nothing more than the liaison to take an active role in budget development solely because there is a good chance that members of the select board will, I'm gonna use the word outlive, but not outlive, will be here longer than many individual staff members. So being able to have that buy-in, at least from a budget standpoint, would be welcomed, in my opinion. I can't speak to the way it used to be because the liaison structure, in my opinion, was non-existent for a majority of the time that I've been. Not saying that any of you were non-existent, but you were, we were not operating as liaisons. You're operating as select board members where, at the end of the day, you can do what you want cause you're the one-fifth of the executive body. So this is setting up something that isn't even necessarily defendable. If we were to ever really break it down, because this is the executive body right here, all five of you in an open meeting. Like, the liaison structure is cute, it's nice, but at the end of the day, it's worth the paper to an eye.
Anything else? All right, then.
Then I guess I need, then I guess I need a job description for a liaison.
Correct.
Can we come up with a poli, this is gonna sound needy, but can we have a policy for it that the staff also buys into so that there's, I, I think it's, if this is something everyone feels is a good idea, I'm on board, I'm not gonna hold it up. I just, I've been on the other side and I know sometimes best intentions don't always land where we want them to. And I think having clear parameters of what is expected both of us, especially of us. You know, we're volunteers, we're elected, you know, we may change over time, but just have that clear. This is what we're supposed to be doing and not supposed to be doing.
Can I go one step further in questioning to stop us from having policies that are not only non-enforceable, but hardly anyone knows about? Can I ask to be instructed to come up with a liaison structure that would honor both the select board's intent and staff? Like, basically, there are a few things on there that I believe do 100% need a liaison. Do I need a liaison to the town administrator's office? Probably not, because the liaison to the town administrator's office, for the most part, is all five of you. And do we necessarily need a liaison to Chief Kucher directly? Probably not.
He's it, yes. Although, we're not available for assignments, just to be clear.
Oh, okay. I am. But I would personally love a liaison when it comes to, say, the complete street stuff. That hub-go stuff that I was talking to you about, I would love nothing more than a liaison because in some ways, it just adds structural integrity to what we're doing. So I can come up with a list of...
So it, so it sounds to me like you're gonna scrub this list and reduce it.
Sir, yes, sir.
You're gonna create a job description, a general job description of what a liaison is. And you're gonna send that new list out to us and we're gonna do our homework and come back at the next meeting with the ones we want to be part of.
Yep.
So I know you're not a fan of a policy for this, Nate, cause it's not necessarily enforceable, but I think it's important because it's essentially an agreeable pack amongst the five of us to say, this is what we all agree to. And if I see Katie out of line, I'll be like, hey, Katie, what are you doing? And vice versa, right? Like, we can hold each...
That goes to the SB rules.
Well, we can hold each other accountable for, even if we amend and add it to the SB rules. But the other thing to think about too, and again, this is why I would love to see you bring this back to your team, is they may have another thought on how to do this, right? So maybe it's on every department. Maybe, you know, oh my God, complete streets is a bloody nightmare for you. Oh my, great, put it down. Say, you know what, I could really use a select board member to help me a little bit more on complete streets.
I could really use a select board member to help me with making the liaison list. I suggest Member Monroe. And I would ask that we don't consider the last time we had me and Member Monroe work together on something as an example, cause this time it'll work.
Okay.
Thanks.
So I, I'm gonna recuse myself from that, but thank you for volunteering. No, like, work with your team. Ask the team what they want. Say, okay, listen, maybe you don't go into 21 items initially, maybe you go to five, right? Does anyone feel in your department, you absolutely need a liaison to the select board? You don't currently have like that, you know, that's making or breaking you or can make a difference. Is there a project, complete streets apparently is Nate's, right, that you really want a liaison? Like, what is it? And just talk with the couple. Because this, I can promise you right now, if we do all of these, we're going to be overwhelmed.
I took the other approach mentally when I was doing this and wanted to give you too many because I didn't want you to come around and say, we used to have 40, now we don't, so.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. You could cut this list probably back even more cause like some of these, like I've been on some of these and they don't really need us. Like, there's no, yeah.
So I would say, you know, work with the team, work with the, you know, send out an email to boards and committees and say, hey, we're just looking, like, we don't have to assign a liaison, but do you feel like it would be helpful to have one? And, you know, like cemetery? Maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe not, right?
Probably not.
They, they may not need it, but that way we go where we're needed and we come up with an understanding of what's expected of us.
I'm 100% on board with that, cause I think it solves the problem that I was trying to solve by, with words and with actual actions, so that I...
That's trash.
Yeah, that's trash.
It's just too much.
Gutsy, you're all excited.
I got all my numbers down.
All right, then, I guess we will just pass this back to you for further development and I'm...
And I don't need a formalized working relationship with any of you. I'll run this, Heather and I are gonna meet once a week while she has this time as her experience adds a tremendous value to my office.
Put it on the Wednesday list or add it.
Next Wednesday. I'm leaving all week.
So I don't need to stop at nine times a week anymore?
You should stop at 10.
Twelve, you should stop at...
I'm trying to stop at...
Yeah.
It's like me stopping.
I took last week off.
You guys, stop at the same time.
Yeah, a lot of times we do.
I would want to remind the board, though, in terms of that, okay?
Try not to.
These people are trying to do a job and they don't need us.
Well, I'm doing other stuff.
You know, so...
I'm doing other stuff.
It's a morale booster sometimes when I go in and ask how they're doing.
Yes.
Okay, then let's move on. The municipal complex building committee proposed charge. Heather, I'm gonna ask you, did you...
I would love to. So, Public Safety Building Committee, as everyone knows it, we met last week. And one of the things the chair had us look at is, do we need to take an opportunity to look at what we're doing, our mission, our goals, and so forth? Because a lot of what we've been charged with doing, we've already accomplished and a lot of it just is obsolete, right? Look at possible locations for a new building. Okay, no, kind of done, and figure out where we're going. Also, you know, we're now, we're no longer just a public police and fire, public safety building here. We're also with town offices. So the question then became, you know, when we look back to the select board as a whole, do we say, hey, you know, we'd like to still just focus on police and fire? Or if we're doing the whole building, maybe we should be the, the proposed title is Municipal Complex Building Committee.
Rolls off the tongue.
Well, you know what? The chiefs actually both liked it cause they both already put in their calendar MCBC and they thought it was a lot faster in writing things. So they love the name, cause it goes in their calendar lovely. But, so that, that piece is a change. So I think everyone has a copy of that mission statement and kind of the charge. But it was also a modification on the who's on the board. And I know, Nate, you made a couple changes, or one change and two minor changes.
I made proposed amendments to the author who accepted them prior to me sending them to you.
Yes, the author, but the only kicker I'd say is that the committee voted on something else. So I think my obligation is to tell you what the committee voted on, then tell you Nate's proposed change that the chair and the author had accepted and then it's up to the board as a whole whether they like any of this or they think it's horrible. Or alternatively, we always have the option, we could disband us as a committee and we could start all over again and look for new people, different people, new people, whatever it may be. So the, the composition of the committee was, I believe, three at large. The police chief and Nate added in the language, or their designee, in his proposal. The fire chief, or their designee. The select board liaison, which I'm currently serving as. And then the last seat, we had talked about, we went back and forth for quite a few minutes relative to who that last seat should be. Because this is now the building that includes town hall offices and not just police and fire, we felt it very important to make sure we represented the town offices. We had talked back and forth whether that could be achieved by having Nate as a town administrator there or as designee, or if we needed someone else. And we went back and forth and we ultimately felt strongly about having someone else from town hall. The reason being is it puts Nate in a precarious spot, right? So many times Nate needs to represent, hey, like, I know these are great ideas, chief, I, I love your design, but we can't afford that, right? But we need everyone's needs and issues to be represented. And sometimes I think it's gonna put him in a bind as to what position he's taking. So having someone from the rest of town hall staff, whether that's from the town clerk's office, whether that's treasurer collector, whether it's someone from a different office, it doesn't matter. Just the ability to have someone else come and say, hey, here's some ideas that you might not be looking at.
But they would be volunteering to do that, cause everybody else on, on the committee is a volunteer. Can I, if I might, just a second, if I might. Because as I was listening to you, Heather, cause I, I was not able to make that, you know, last meeting. My main concern, as everybody knows, this, this committee was formed as a result of our project. We completed phase one. I think one of its major focuses has got to be, cause that's why the people who are on that committee got on and begin with, not to be, do phase one and then they're done. We still have phase two and phase three that we, I hope, fill behind and want to eventually try to get passed, so I just caught, that would be a comment I would've made the other night, too. If I'm not hearing it, that's one of my strong feelings, is that that is a major focus of that committee. Cause that's, you've got architects, we've got drawing, et cetera. They're not gonna be torn up now because we're here. This is just the beginning of it. So that committee is very much important, that they're functioning and that is also one of the primary goals, in my opinion.
But are you, so I'm confused. They, why can't the meetings be on like a, what the hell day is late Thursday?
Tuesday, Tuesday, 6 o'clock.
Yeah, the day that's late, they can have a meeting before the time's done. So that way they're still being paid, so they're not volunteering extra or doing extra. They could be...
Oh, they're talking about the staff.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, the reason I said that we have to be voluntary because I don't see where all of our committees... because I don't see where all of our committees, which are our voluntary, that we then go to a staff member and says, now you're also going to be doing this.
Well, I think we're putting the cart and hitting the horse here, right? We're just looking for a group, a selection, to pull that fifth member from, if I understand what Heather's saying. And she feels that maybe a staff member that works in this building would be a good person to choose.
I'm not arguing.
And I agree with that.
I agree with it, too.
Now, I'm not saying, you know, if you wanna pay them or if you don't wanna pay them or if somebody would even be interested if they weren't getting paid. I don't know any of that. But, you know, I think we gotta figure out who we wanna try to select first before we, before we start talking about, you know, when we're gonna have meetings and how we make it accommodating to other people.
With our staff members, and I can't quote you, but we have some Hubbardston people and some non Hubbardston people. And this committee, again, as far as my feeling, the focus is for the Hubbardston project.
But.
So.
Well, yeah, but remind Jeff, our police chief doesn't live in town and he's on the committee, right? He's serving in his official capacity. He is salaried, but theoretically, you know, if there was comp time, you know, it's all irrelevant because he's still on the clock when he's there. It would be the same thing, but Chief Kuchar haven't.
We, part of the discussion with that was that the employees would choose their representative.
And if that's the case, I think that should be for the fire and police as well because it did not come in as police chief or fire chief. It came in as police chief, fire chief, or their designee. And if it is not going to be the town administrator or their designee, I ask that we change it to the police department or the fire department and let them be selected the same way. And with that case, if we are going to pick someone else, they can do the work.
So I think I'd like to hear the rest of what Chief Kuchar's saying.
So what we were discussing was that to get input from the staff, to have a member of the staff so that, you know, office layout, things of that nature, if us as a committee is missing something. So like, for instance, for the police department, I've taken the plans, I've given them to the sergeants and the officers. I'm like, you know, am I missing something that we need? So it's really to give them a voice to tell us what is it that they need.
As did I, right? I also brought, we had three meetings.
But that was our discussion. So it wasn't to cut out you as the town administrator, so I hope that's not how you're taking it, Nate.
So the options, too, remember, so this is in the select board's hands. So as a board, we could say, this thing stinks, go away, never mind, we're not doing this, disband the entire committee, start over. Or we can take the suggestion and the draft that's been presented by the committee and say, what do we like about this, what do we not like about this? So if you go to the membership, so write a representative of the select board, the FinCom, three members of, I forgot FinCom earlier, sorry. Three members at large, that puts us at five. The two chiefs puts us at seven. If we keep in the, a representative from someone at town hall, that puts eight. Theoretically speaking, we could stick the TA on, the TA ex officio, so in their official capacity. Or I guess just the TA, 'cause we don't say ex officio on the others. We could stick the TA on there as well.
I don't have another staff member that would do that. Like, these people are really tired.
So I think we give them the opportunity, Nate, right? So you know what, if no one shows up from town hall, that's fine. And when we talked about it, we said.
Why isn't there a police officer showing up or a fire department member showing up?
Nate, I think you're taking it too personally.
Because this is a personal problem.
No, it's not. I know that, but no one is coming at you personally. This is, I know you feel like you have put your blood, sweat, and tears in this project, and I agree, you have, along with everybody else on this board and committee and on this board and like a whole bunch of other towns. No one's coming at you. I do agree with Heather that you do have, you know, like, you're looking at it. It could be a little hard for you to separate financial if something comes that way. I do agree with that. Do I think that would totally skew you? No. But also, you've been doing a hell of a lot. And sometimes it's okay to put it on, to see if someone else will take it off your plate, to give you five seconds of breath. And also, you'll be able to look at it with a fresh set of eyes at the same time. So no one, like, just.
Not you.
Well, no, you're getting low.
A lot of things about perspective, right? So I was in a training today and they were talking about this hot air balloon and four people were calling in to report the balloon. It's white, it's red, it's yellow, it's green, you're all wrong, right? And then someone said, tell me what you see, right? Because they were standing in front of the white side. They couldn't see over there was the blue side, right? It's the perspective, it's the lens. So by adding another layer, another lens, right? We're saying, okay, listen, town hall staff, you guys might love it, you might hate it, you might want to, you might not. But maybe there's a time when you wanna come and say, hey, you know, I know you guys are going through the plans and I know you got the locker rooms over here and too many bathrooms over here, but hey, like, where do you want me to stick my files, right? Like, there's no place for it. And I think that's important to have that lens. And I think Nate as the TA brings a really important lens. And I think, yes, it could very much be valuable for him to be on here. And in a lot of towns, the TA is on there. Honestly, if I put the TA on there, I wouldn't say or designee, I want the TA.
And my question, Heather, is why isn't it, why is it a town hall employee? Why is it a member of my staff and not a town employee? Therefore, it can be a fire member, a police officer.
Because we wanna represent their portion of the building, right? The police department represents the police functionality of the building. The fire department represents the fire functionality of the building. Town hall offices, yes, they're all different, but at times they share some similarities. And they also might have a time where they have a more pressing thing. They're going, hey, you're doing the layout for that. Hey, could you not stick my intake window for the treasurer collector next to the dumpster, please?
No, all I ask is that if we're going to do it that way, remove the, remove all department head because I am the same level of department head over the, over the town office managerial staff as either of the chiefs are.
So I hear what you're saying and I appreciate your comment. My position, unfortunately, though, is going to be the recommendation to the board ends up to the board. I'm only one voice. My recommendation would be if we stick with the way this is written, I would recommend the membership being a representative from the select board, finance committee, three community members at large. So all those seats are already filled, or we could change the select board rep, that's fine. Fire chief or their designee, police chief or their designee, town hall staff member. And, you know, we can add the town administrator and then that brings us to an odd number.
A nine. So you have not only the town administrator, but you also have somebody from town hall. So you kill both of those two checkpoints.
Why don't we need a police officer or a, why does the town hall need two?
So, Chief, do we currently have, does it currently say police chief or designee or just police chief?
I don't know that.
Okay. Nate, was that your adding?
Nope, I did not add or designee.
Okay, so that was already there before?
Yep.
All right. That's my recommendation.
Okay, so you're saying nine.
I guess I don't, I guess I don't understand, Nate, what your concern is. Can you lay it out for me in layman's terms? You're suggesting that the fire chief.
No, I am suggesting the.
Or the police chief. Should have an additional designee on this?
No. So this was sent to, in, by the committee last week as the members, and then fire chief and or their designee, police chief or their designee, member of town hall. And then I responded back to Chief Knight saying, hey, I think we, it said or his designee. So I said, I think we should change it to there because we all agree that a police chief, a fire chief, or a town administrator could be a man or a woman. And also, if we are going to have it be the fire chief, police chief, or their designee, it not say a member of town hall staff, it be the town administrator or their designee. The Seth came back and said, yeah, that's fine. That's why I sent that forward. The, that's it. And now all I am asking is if that is going to be the case where you want a representative of town hall, one, you make sure that they can do the work 'cause it's a lot of work. And two, that you change the other, the fire chief or their designee and the police chief or their designee to a member of the police department and a member of the fire department in fairness across the board.
So I think we're getting a little too personal, there's too much personalization going on here. I understand that you're very passionate about this issue, Nate. I'm just gonna restate my position one more time and then it's up to the chair what he wants to do. But, you know, I think there's a distinction in each of these pieces, right? The fire chief represents the fire department, the police chief represents the police department. Nate represents the entire town. It's not the same thing. He can't represent the entire town and represent town hall simultaneously. Those interests are going to conflict. That's why he doesn't represent the police chief. That's why he doesn't represent the fire chief, right? There's things he's not gonna know about and we need to make sure we have an opportunity for those voices. If someone from the town hall group doesn't wanna come, that's fine. We just don't have someone represent that. It would be unfortunate because I think we're really missing the opportunity to say, hey, you know, we wanna make sure that this is an awesome plan, we're good and everything. What are we missing? And what else can you add to those pieces? And I think in this case, you know, it does make sense for the police chief and the fire chief to be the representatives. You know, they're the head of their departments. They're also, you know, professionals in their field. They understand the rules, regulations, all of those pieces, the safety of their officers. As Chief Kuchar said, he brings things back to his officers and says, hey, am I missing anything? Do you guys have anything that I need to bring forward? I think it's different when we're talking about the town administrator and town hall because the town administrator represents the entire town. There are most certainly going to be times when his opinion and town hall staff is going to be different. I think both of those opinions need to be heard and this gives everyone a seat of people.
If I may, 'cause I'm still trying to work this in my head, to the point of the two chiefs, I agree with you on that because when this committee was first formed, before we got to where we are now, the idea of having the police chief, the fire chief, they're the experts in their fields, not a patrolman, taking nothing away from a patrolman or a fireman, if you understand what I'm saying. We look to you to be the expert on what's required now in building, et cetera. I also personally feel we look to the town administrator to be the expert, too, on whatever, because they are dealing directly with, hopefully, we're moving on with this project once it gets into that stage. If the town administrator is not at a meeting, I can see where there're gonna be questions we'll, we need to ask the town administrator, which ties the hands of the committee. My point being, I think it's equally important that, so it's slightly different, but that's the town administrator as opposed to a designee because a designee can say, yeah, I'm at the meeting, but I'll have to get back to my boss and tell him what's the answers. Where this committee, in my opinion, has got the experts there for that very reason to handle everything that comes up in their meetings. That's just my feeling on this.
But you're still at eight, so making.
Oh, I'm not talking about the number, I'm just talking about the individuals.
And that's why I think that maybe adding, keeping the town administrator on there by adding somebody from the offices and then you bring it at nine and then everyone wins.
Then why isn't it an employee in general? Because I do represent that.
It can be, I'm not against a town employee in general, but somebody that works in these offices, so that way they understand the office. I wouldn't say.
The police will work here someday.
Yes, and hence the reason why they're on this list. I would not suggest, like Claudia from the senior center because she won't be in these offices. I wouldn't suggest, you know, one of the plow guys. I would suggest somebody from these offices up here because they will be in the building. That's the problem, that's the catch, you know, like, to get the other side of your point. And also to see, like, if they need, like, the office space or maybe something that you didn't think of because they're in a different field than you.
We, I can guarantee you, the town office staff has had more opportunity to look at these plans and have their.
So, so I think it's really important to invite the town hall staff, specifically town hall staff, to the table. And one of the reasons, and, you know, just looking at this, right? So we have the fire chief is a male, the police chief is a male, the town administrator is a male. We really need a female employee from the town hall staff 'cause I'm telling you, men and women look at things different, right? And yes, I might be sitting on that committee, but I'm not in the building every day. I'm not looking to work in the building. I'm not going to see issues that someone else sees. And I understand, Nate, that you don't think anyone would wanna do it, but you know what? I think it's important that if even one of them wants to do it or they wanna rotate every time we have a meeting, we don't leave that frequently, I think it's gonna add value.
Oh, that person will be doing plenty, like, they'll be doing the work.
So, I think it's important. I know Nate and I are disagreeing on this point, but I really think it's important. And I understand that he emailed the revised version over to the author of the document and so forth, but I think it's also important to make sure I restate that, you know, the board, the committee as a whole voted to include the town hall representative as one of the positions. We did not have necessarily the town administrator role thrown in there, but again, it's up to the select board on what they have and I think that's not a bad idea. And it also brings us to an odd number, which are all good things. And we're not needing, what do we need again? Not to the center, right?
December, he's told me the second weekend.
So theoretically speaking, Mr. Chair, if we're not feeling ready to make a decision on this, we can postpone it to the next meeting because we have time.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's gonna change what we do and don't do in a month.
Well, yeah, 'cause if you guys aren't even meeting. But I'm still, I'm, I'm still at a loss of what would be the hurt in adding one of the town employees.
What would be the hurt in having it be the police officer or the fire department?
Because it's a different point of view from this, from.
No.
The staff, a lady, which pretty much all of our staff are ladies. I'm like.
I don't think any other department, board, committee, or regulatory board has a gender qualifier.
Why are you against this?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to.
Let me ask you another question. Well, I want your true honest feeling from your side.
Because the suggestion is retaliatory in general.
Retaliatory?
Yes.
Against who?
By the chair, against me, because of the review here.
How do you think it's retaliatory?
I'll tell you about it later.
Okay.
Thank you.
But if it was the committee voting for it.
That's not how it was brought up in the meeting, I don't believe.
The commit, like, you can't, like, you don't-
Hold it, hold it, man.
Yeah, you, you can't, you, as town administrator, cannot change the will of a committee.
I did not.
Okay. What did this say beforehand?
I sent, I sent you guys both.
I'm just saying, you cannot, ever.
And I did not.
Well, that's what this is coming across of, is you are changing the will that committee voted on because you talked to Seth after the fact. The committee voted, the committee sent it in, you talked after the fact. That is not how any of this ever works.
I did not talk to anyone, it was in an email.
That, same thing. Whether it's typing or verbal, it's still talking. And you can't-
And it was not about me or anything. I still feel that if it should be-
Then why wouldn't you just bring it up here?
Fair across the board.
Then why wouldn't you just bring it up here that you feel, rather than try to change it and then present it to us? Cause if Heather didn't say anything, how the hell would I know? Because unless I watched their meeting, which I do, but they're being broadcast after the fact because we don't have the equipment up yet. So unless I watched their meeting, how would I know that they chose as a committee that they wanted somebody from the town offices and not necessarily the town administrator?
Because both versions were inter-packeted, you know?
But it didn't say that.
Yes, it did. I highlighted my changes.
I'm just saying, it's, I'm not gonna know the whole discussion and how it came about. That is my problem. You, it's like, and I don't understand what the big deal is, especially seeing that realistically, I think a nine-member board, and I think the nine-member board, if you had you and one of the people from the town offices, I don't understand what the big deal is. Other than things were changed and it was presented in a different light. That's my problem, and I don't understand why you're kind of having a meltdown about it.
No, I'm not having a meltdown about anything, man.
Mr. Chairman, we're only about an hour and a half in, but do you think we could take a five-minute recess?
I think we need a five-minute recess.
And just reset for a few minutes?
All right. We will take a, by that clock, it's eight o'clock, so let's say eight, eight oh five, we will reconvene.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, water. It looks like it says eight oh four as opposed to eight oh five, but, uh, and where are we in this discussion?
I have no idea.
I think, I think Heather made a suggestion that we, we put this off.
Yeah.
Uh, I think I like that discussion, I think I like that suggestion so I can get more information about where all this contention is coming from about this topic. I frankly am not prepared to vote on this.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
I, I agree, I think we should be put off for a little bit, cause they're not meeting anyway, so there's no rush.
Okay.
Agreed.
And-
A motion or no? To just hold off or just-
You don't need a motion to table something, as long as there's, uh-
Yeah.
All right, then, let's, let's pull this from the agenda in the sense of having any action taking on it, and hopefully we can get further communications with everybody and hopefully arrive at an agreeable setup. But, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Table.
All right. All right. All right, TA report, Nate, if you would.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, after what was a incredibly unsuccessful presentation at the last meeting, I wanted to take a moment to try to do things differently. So, in front of you, there is a printed out version of the town administrator's report. The intent of this is less of me to talk to you, to talk at you, and more a opportunity for me to bring up a wide swath of topics to find out what the board feels they do not know enough about. We are entering a timeframe where we are very, very fortunately going to be able to stop acting reactionary and moving and doing new and going to be able to set up and run the municipality like a municipality instead of a moving company and all the things that we have been for the last sixteen months. So with that, my updates are operationally. The admin and finance are fully operational at forty-eight Gardner Road. We had the sign go up. I would like to thank Jim Dixon for not only doing the sign project, but turning it into a culvert replacement, rock wall-
It looks nice.
And a variety of different things.
Very impressive.
Yeah.
Uh, Microsoft three sixty-five and SharePoint training continue to improve. Our workflows continue to become more understood as they go. If any of you want a better understanding of literally any of the workflows, let me know and I can send them to you. My original intent was to make a large-scale presentation, but that got to being sixty, seventy pages, so I scrapped it. And we have this, we have over one thousand submissions within Hub Connect to date. Active modules are several, we've already talked about them. Any budget check-in? I didn't anticipate the last item being long, so this, this was long. I'm gonna try to move through this. Budget check-in-
I think this is much, I like the bullet points. I very much do like the bullet points.
Most departments are tracking between seventeen, yes, sir.
Can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
I see you've got, um, four modules working? And you've got three in development?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the totality of the modules, or there's still more to come?
There, it, in terms of being, at some point, I'm going to stop calling things modules. And so I think that's the direction we're going. I have very little interest in creating more kind of busy work for myself. So the goals here is to create less modules and just tie things to the way that they are written as a policy or the way they have always been done. The goal here is to create sustainability and just a actual municipal government that is operating as a municipal government and not something that is moving and changing this and changing that. We've done that. I want to ensure that we are going to be sustaining for the future and not just in a constant state of, of change. So what I refer to as modules will likely fade away over time with the exception of things that are created to be structural modules like the hub time timesheet. And if a day comes when I am no longer employed here, if people wanna stop calling it hub time or hub fix, just by all means, feel free. At the end of the day, the modules are a way that I am trying to buy morale and kind of team buy-in by making the process more, not, not cute, but just more palatable to people. Because hub time is a lot more fun than, hey, feel like your timesheet? Like, so that's kind of, yeah, that's kind of the whole deal there. And when, when we're making our, our C-click fix module instead of buying it, why would I call it C-click fix when we actually have a, a town that abbreviates well? If we were Worcester or Lemonster, maybe we wouldn't do it because Liam fix doesn't sound as good, but-
Woo fix is kind of fun.
Woo fix could work.
Sorry.
But yeah, no, uh, if, if there was instruction from the board to stop saying module, I, I would, like, I, I think, I think it creates buy-in and just a sense of ownership for the town over a system that was made here. And, but at the end of the day, there was always a timesheet. There was always a way to reach out and get your road fixed. But we didn't have a C-click fix module. I was able to, to make one, I was, we were able to utilize investments and grant opportunities to create and, and modernize. And that's what all of last week's really long drawn-out presentation was, was about. I think it is very nice and actually am proposing to the staff that we kind of put a name to the way we already do things and refer to the working group under the town administrator's office as HubGov, a way to ensure operational continuity, continuity, past any one employee. Because I don't want to see any group of people have to go through a complete turnover again that pretty much dropped absolutely everything on the floor and had to start from scratch. It wasn't fun, it wasn't something that I personally, as a town administrator or as a person, want to do again. But if I had to do it again, I would do it with these people again. Because this was awesome. And that is something you have in front of you, if you want to review it before we get there. As member Walker suggested, uh, not one, but two or three times, and I do apologize for that, it's been a real busy few months. I did put forth a packet of commendation letters for all of the staff that we could think of. They, they are all individually named, so it's not copies. It's like one for Patricia and one for Mary and-
One for everybody.
It's one for everybody. We're gonna sign these tonight.
So when, so when do you expect the health department permitting the planning workflows and the hybrid meeting portal? Which are all modules in development to be completed?
My goal is to be completely done by the end of FY twenty-six with everything that has the word module attached to it so that we can move forward and just be a municipality and not rolling anything out anymore. It is an incredibly unfortunate circumstance that turnover and siloed systems created the need to recreate everything from the ground up, but it is what it is at this point. My goal is all of the staff-facing sort of things that would create issues and turnover problems and just stress and change management are done. Cause that was everything we done, we've done in the last quarter. Everything that will be coming out now is resident-facing or a enhanced version of what we already do. Like bringing the inspectional services and planning online the way it was intended to be with the building department and just, and building electrical and gas as it was supposed to be in two thousand and nineteen when we originally invested in OpenGov. So we're pretty much just tying everything back to the rules that were outlined at the beginning. That's all the modules are, and it's me thinking I'm innovative and coming up with cute names that create a opportunity for people to say, oh, well, it's in HubConnect. Other than, well, it's in the file system under two thousand and twenty-four, like, because the secret sneaky part of HubConnect is that it all, it all files itself. So continuity will be there for people as they can then look under FY twenty-six license type and go from there. So as much as we're saying modules and rollout and all that, that's, those are buzzwords. And this, my goal is to have all of our workflows completely documented, centralized, and rolled out by the end of fiscal year twenty-six.
Hey, I had one question.
Thank you, don't mind. Yes, sir.
And the, and I know I've discussed this with you before, in the facilities module, is there a maintenance tracker in there for the heating systems? For like, anything that has to do with that power of each building we have? Cause I know we've run into trouble where the burner wasn't cleaned or this and that, but it needs to be, somewhere it needs to be noted so you get, somebody gets a notification that it's due for service.
Down the road, yes.
Yeah.
But I am not willing to put the staff through more change management at this specific time. In FY twenty-eight, could we turn and say, hey, you know what would be great? Cause what, we have the ability to create whatever we want, not just me, but everybody. Cause a lot of the things within Civic Optimize, or they've rebranded into what's called PADS, Process Automation and Digital Services, creates a opportunity for people that don't want to write code to also create workflows. Patricia's been in there, we, we have had some murder board sessions, that's what she was calling it, not me.
Don't read into that.
So-
Is it being tracked, at least, the-
So, yeah, so-
Yes, everything, 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 everything is tracked.
Anywise, I have-
Well, just in general.
Put up so many calendar reminders for myself after, especially after we had that issue this past year, that, okay, and then I talked to the professionals of, when should this be cleaned, what am I looking for, when does it need service? Why does the burner keep going out at station one? Are we doing something wrong? And every once in a while, we'll get kicked off auto delivery, which screws everything up, but there's only so much I can do without actually physically being in their system as well.
And I have all of our national, we have a national grid account, and besides the fact that we have a million accounts and it's confusing, we are tracking absolutely-
The only thing is mechanical, each building has its own mechanical systems.
Yep.
So it needs to be tracked on when it's serviced.
I do.
So, so we don't fall behind.
I do.
Yeah, but we never used to.
Um, we just had Bigelow-
No, we did not use to, and-
So that's all I want.
And it is in-
Even if you have it on a whiteboard written down of each building, and when it's due for cleaning or service, that would solve that.
All of the buildings have calendar reminders, cause we just had Bigelow there to do the yearly, um-
Generator.
Generator, like, I kept track of who is supposed to come when.
And the goal is to add that to the centralized dashboard, it's just not on the immediate priority list because we are tracking it more than we have in the past.
Could I interrupt for a moment? Cause can we let Nate get through the report and then if there are any questions?
It was my intention to have an open conversation. I really want to-
Take your time, I just didn't wanna get stuck and we never get through this and we still have a few other items.
If you don't get through this and we wanna go home, I'll, I'll, I'll go back up.
And we gotta sign, we have to sign twenty somewhat, so go ahead with the town administrator report, please.
Anytime anyone wants to talk about the Hub Connect modules or has an idea or wants to see the backend of Civic Optimize or wants to know what we are or are not tracking, feel free to come stop by, we'll talk to you about it until we're blue in the face. We can stop calling it the backend, yes. All right. Uh, budget, I sent you guys an email, we're tracking exactly where, where we should be, a little bit ahead of the thirty percent where we would be exactly, but that is expected as we pay a lot of our bills at the beginning of the year. Staff development, Travis continues to do MCPPO work, even though he has zero time with everything going on. Mary has completed her both treasurer and collector's licensure with the state. I believe I noted this before, but I am very, very proud of how quickly she's done that and her commitment to both the town. We talked when she was first hired that she would do it in three or four years, she did it in under two. So that was very, very impressed. Melody attended the town clerks conference a few weeks ago, and I am continuing my MMMA mentorship and going to begin management development training through the town's insurance, a opportunity that I spoke with Jeff and Heather about, and just really wanted to take the opportunity to further my own managerial skills and abilities to work here and better both myself and staff every single day, every single month, and every single year. I enjoy my job here, I want to be here, and I believe that all staff members, including board members, should seek internal training, both professionally and as a person doing a job. And I have to, I have to start that trend. So I really appreciate all of the training that staff members are going to. I look forward to working with them over the next few months to set training plans for themselves as we work on the goals for each department and individual employees in January. But I know I've spoken with most of you about potentially looking into management training, and that is something that I am now doing. So I will update you on that as we move forward. The first class, not class, the first session will be on Wednesday. I am going to attend even though I will not be technically on the clock. Insurance and healthcare are wild, and it's not something we can feasibly get into this evening because the, it's high double-digit increases that we're looking at for the upcoming year, so it should be, we'll have that conversation at a later time. Elm Street is complete and is beautiful. I put a Facebook post of me driving on it with my phone snuggled up on the camera, not dr- holding it while driving.
Thank you.
Brigham Street, Travis, can you please give a update on why Brigham Street is being held until next year? I know we have a legitimate reason and it is seasonal, but I am one hundred percent gonna mess it up.
I did put a post on Facebook explaining, but, uh, short story of a long story is, D E P held us up on the culverts, so when they came in to do, um, Elm Street, Gary Road Passings, uh, they were not able to do Brigham. And, uh, and Gary Road cut off because of the last two culverts they held us up on. So that put us at the end of the reclaim's list. And unfortunately, the emulsion, the emulsion that is used in the FDR that, um, I do on the roads needs to be fifty-five and above. And our overnight temperatures and recent temperatures have been well below that, so that would actually screw up the, um, emulsified FDR, which there's no sense of rushing something which is gonna be, uh, main thoroughfare and around for a while, so it'll be in the spring of next year and, um, over the deadline.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to say, um, real quick though, I do wanna say thank you to Trish for the actual sign itself out front. I know from dealing with signs that it's super fun and painful and trying to pick what you think is gonna look best is hard. what you think is gonna look best is hard when you can't physically see the big huge sign. So, I just want to put it out there that, thank you, it looks, it looks lovely out there, the town, the town offices with the owl and everything.
Police's sign is also upstairs locked away in my office, so when they finally move over, they will come back and install it free of charge. So, thank you. It was really hard to pick a day and color. It was so, the hardest, like, does it, like, I thought, you know, planning a wedding was hard, but no, picking a town sign, this even worked.
Yes, and you can ask everybody's opinion, and it's still, you're gonna...
And you're like, "Why? Why did you pick, like, it's gonna get so dirty."
Yeah, second guess yourself twelve hundred times over.
And I'm like, "This is why."
Yep.
So, thank you, Katie. I was so excited when I got the phone call that it was being installed, so.
When'd they put it up?
They put it up last Thursday.
Out here?
Yeah.
Right out here, were you blind?
I am.
It's a nice mumps that Jim put out and everything else, it's all pretty, and it's got the stone around it and everything else. Yeah.
Got a light on it or...
Well, yeah.
We did not look like yet, Jim and I, so the whole project was me, Travis, Jim Dixon. We've all put our heads together, Jim did the grunt work and Travis did the culvert replacement, because I'm obviously not qualified to do that, anyway, for sure. But I ordered the sign and got it installed, but, um, yeah, the lights and stuff Jim and I are gonna work on, because we don't know if we want to run power out there, or do we want to just do the really nice solar uplighting?
I spoke with Goldsmith two weeks ago at this time, because we are likely to be paving later, we're going to pick a decent solar or something like that.
Yeah, for that, and then when we...
Yeah.
We'll get that out later.
Because we don't know what...
Yeah, I was right there with you, I agree. All right, are you plugging, you good, your cord?
I am, I still think we should do plowing, just because Travis has been here for...
Ever.
A long time, more than...
Where are we going?
Plowing.
Oh, the private way. Okay. All right, we'll move down to item seven, policy review, age, private way plowing policy. Basically, we're trying to determine whether we are adopting the policy or not, and I know you had a question last time of the liability, I know you feel strongly about that. So, that's where we're at. Did you want to comment on this, or...
The only additional comment that I had before is legal counsel has not responded. It was sent to Carolyn, who forwarded it to a colleague of hers, and I have not heard back. I sent it to them for just a generalized review and about liability, as you guys had noted.
And the other question I had originally was, Travis, you had time to look this over now?
Yes, I looked through it and I had changed some things in it. I do feel that possibly there should be something in there stating that if the town can't afford to do it, then, in other words, if we can afford to sit and plow certain private roads, then I feel that if we have that money to do that, then they should be put towards employees' wages that are in need of first.
Okay. All right, so the actual policy, though, for like the fourteen feet and the width and the mailboxes and all that stuff, you're fine with?
You should have an updated form, because I did send it over tonight.
Okay.
And it has all the updating in there between, it was fifteen feet wide, a vertical clearance of twenty feet.
Yeah, that was not in there.
There were hanging branches.
I didn't get it.
Okay.
From Travis.
From Travis?
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like we're not ready to vote on this one again. We still need to hear back from legal, we need to make sure we have Travis's feedback, so I think instead of spending a lot of time on this...
Let's table this for the next meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Thanks, Travis.
Can we have the updated, most updated version of the policy in our packet for the next meeting?
Travis, I'm looking back, I don't have, did you give it, did you do it in paper again? Because I don't have an email from you, that's what I was sort of waiting on.
It didn't email.
So, Nate, I think you can probably work with Travis offline on that one, because I think we don't have enough to move on today.
Understood.
Okay, so we're moving on.
Thank you, Travis.
Sorry. I hope we provided entertainment for you for the past two hours.
Still on policy review, we joint elected vacancy appointment policy, again, whether we, to adopt it revised as presented.
Did this change at all since last time, Nate?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so it's the same, same one?
Yep.
So, did it get put in to meet with the, um...
Chairs.
The chairs or the board to have it put forth, or no? Did none of that change?
I did not make any changes.
Okay, because that's what we, I thought we put forward.
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do.
Table it.
We wanted to have the applicants meet with the board they're applying to first to get a feel for what the job entails, and then if they continue to want to pursue that position, then we could have a joint meeting with the board and the select board to talk about that. Is that what we talked about?
Yeah, yeah.
Then, I don't think we really need to table anything. It's, if you make a motion and note that you want it placed like that, I will write it and we can be good with it, because I would like to be able to post the Board of Health, which I was waiting on, to ensure that we do it in a standardized way moving forward.
Okay.
All right.
I'm fine with that, the board is in agreement with that, one modification.
Yeah, we, whatever we originally said last meeting.
Yeah, I'll go back and pull the...
It gave a window to, for the, yeah. It's, should be written down somewhere. You better be on video.
I have the transcription.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the motion?
Yes.
I like, I will send it to Trish.
Oh, thank God.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint elected vacancy appointment policy as presented with the modification of language amended at the last meeting.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further question or discussion on this? And Nate, and you're, oh, that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, all in favor?
Ayes.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Post the Board of Health seat and just bring it forward one more time to just be kind of like thumbs up. We'll, we'll be fine. Just make sure that the verbiage is the way that you intended.
Point, going back before we go to the closing procedures, on your TA report, you mentioned the commendation letter. Do we need to vote on these, or, meaning, is everybody happy with the form and so forth, or is, and we just... Because we have to sign these tonight. Everyone had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Okay. We don't need to vote on this, okay? All right. All right, then going further, man is now reasonably anticipated by the chair, that's the use of the first meeting house.
Mr. Chair, can I read one into the record just so that people can be aware of what we're commending the staff for?
Okay, so now we're talking about the use of the first meeting house.
No.
No, he's gonna read that.
Read the letter.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, all right.
All right, this is, the one in front of me is specifically to Patricia, but all staff members, you have one, all of the staff members that were here at... At the time, it is to the different staff members from the Hubbard's and Select Board and Town Administrator, date October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Subject, commendation for service during a period of transition and modernization. Over the majority of two thousand and twenty-five, the town of Hubbard's experienced one of its most significant operational transitions in its history. Between February and October, we successfully relocated our municipal services to forty-eight Gardner Road while simultaneously upgrading or replacing nearly every major administrative system, modernizing the way we serve residents and support each other as colleagues. This letter is issued jointly by the Select Board and the Town Administrator to commend you for your professionalism, adaptability, and dedication during this extraordinary period of change. During these months, you and your fellow staff members went above and beyond to ensure the public services remained consistent and responsive. You worked through construction dust, system mitigations, new workflows, and unfamiliar processes, all while continuing to meet the needs of residents, boards, and one another. Your efforts made it possible to establish operations in our new municipal campus at forty-eight Gardner Road and, comma, implement the town's new digital workflow systems, launch and turtle staff portal, and transition into new technologies while maintaining uninterrupted service delivery. The Select Board and Town Administrator extend their sincere appreciation for your service and professionalism throughout this transformation. The success of these efforts reflects your commitment to public service and to one another. Thank you for your continued dedication to our residents and to the mission of building a stronger, more connected Hubbard's. Sincerely, Hubbard's and Select Board, Jeffrey L. Williams, Catherine V. Young, Peter Walker, Chris E. Perego, Heather M. Monroe, Heather M. Monroe, Nathan R. Boudreau, Town Administrator, C.C., Personnel File.
Very nice.
Yes, they do. And now that we're in the middle of signing, we have to hold up the meeting again.
That's okay. Part of being an elected official.
Is it all of them now?
Oh, this one's gonna go back. No, yeah, that was the one ninety-one.
For the future.
It's a J?
It's a J.
It's a J. I have it all saved.
I know, some of them, like, nice thick paper.
Could we pause on the signing so we can at least finish the business?
Yeah.
And then, then these people, although you can leave anytime you want, I mean, but...
That's so kind of you, Jeff. We don't keep it...
Well, I'm simply saying, why should they sit here while we're signing things, you know? When we, we have an item to talk about. The use of the first meeting house, okay?
All right.
Some earlier discussion was made tonight, and we can open it up now.
Do we think we should have the new committee meet, organize themselves, kind of review this, and even see if we're in the position where we're ready to start?
This is a temporary process that I wanted to get in order until that time that they could set a more permanent structure for the way we do it. This is simply because we are getting requests already.
But are we currently situated to rent out the property?
So, this would be for mostly, if you look, five oh one C threes, town, um... Basically, town ordinances, so like the senior center, special events, the historical society, stuff that has to do with town, basically, because if not, they'd have to have insurance.
It codifies what we're already doing, because the, there were two groups that had already established kind of scheduled things. One was an audition for a play, and the other is a seasonal event later in the season.
Is that the brass?
Yes, the brass bands.
And now we're getting requests from different people because they heard about X, Y, and Z. So, I just wanted to make sure that we, I don't need it to be a temporary policy. This could simply be a, "Hey, thumbs up, yes, may you continue to do that until such time as the board, as the new board can get put together and figure it out."
So, do we, we're not currently planning to charge a fee for non-town?
I don't...
Is the building even up to code for public use?
Yep.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. Is it ADA compliant?
No.
Not, that's, this building isn't totally ADA compliant.
Are we ready to let the general public be going in this building? The way I understood it, the thing needed a lot of work and a lot of repair before it was ready to be used as a public space.
The main hall is up there.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I mean, the kitchen and stuff is not, so that I would say nix. We don't allow people to use the kitchen.
Well, I don't think we're the ones that should be making that decision. Doesn't it have to be inspected by somebody with a, with a certain certification or licensure to make sure we can use this as a public meeting space?
Well, we had it inspected.
It was inspected and it meets the qualifications that it met before, so...
It functioned as a church.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to do caroling and things like that and the stuff that's always been going on would maybe a few extra...
But the stuff that always been, has been going on is, is when it was privately owned, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, now it's publicly owned. So, I think we need to dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure this thing is up to snuff before something goes in there and we have a catastrophe that we don't want to happen.
Then, with that, I would like the opposite and for the board to consider not authorizing any office, the Town Administrator's office or any office, to allow outside or inside organizations to use the facility until such time as the first meeting house committee has been established and the building has been further studied.
I, I beg to differ, and only because we had a building inspection go through before we took it. We paid money to have the building inspector go through it.
And our building inspector went through it, and we have a letter. It's not, it's as, it's, it's fine.
I mean, it's not like Changerolot or anything, it's not a brand new building. It's a, you know, almost three hundred foot year old building, but it's not bad. Like, it's not, like, doors aren't falling off or like holes and rot or anything like that. The only thing I would suggest is we don't let anyone ever use that kitchen, because it's not, that's not even remotely up to code.
Well, is that prison locked and sealed from, I mean, I think we gotta, I think we gotta get it.
It can be, it can, it has a door on it that's...
Again, a lot of people saying a lot of things about how, you know, the building is there and everything's okay, but there's a difference between what you think is okay to be used and what legal thinks is okay to be used. And where it's going from private structure to a public structure, I think we need to know that.
So, let's, I mean, I know it costs money to call a lawyer, but, okay, this property has transferred to a different owner. Are there any requirements, which you might know, that we have to have it inspected in our name as a town?
We've had all of our inspections that we can't...
Private, that's for the sale, right? That was for the sale? So, legal wise?
I don't have an answer.
Yeah, so I don't either, so he might...
Mike, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Stoff, five oh one by Gro, I think there needs to be some consideration of the distance when you, the difference between inspection and code. So, what was done with a professional consultant was for the facility condition.
And the building commissioner's code.
Okay, the consultant did facility condition. The building inspection was done by our in-house... Building commissioner, so make sure you make that nuanced difference in your mind. And I think what, remember Chris was talking about was the code, not the fact that it may have a broken door hinge somewhere. Is that correct?
I think...
Hold it, hold it.
I'm concerned with whether it be code or conditioning, I'm not sure, because it's not my forte. But I know certain buildings have to have, certain public buildings need different, you know, upgrades and, and, you know, structures and whatnot to be considered code, maybe, I guess, is what you're saying. But I want to make sure that it's safe to be used for public use, because, you know, my house can't be used as a public building if I were to sell it to the town tomorrow. You know what I mean?
Good point.
And I think that's kind of what we're doing here, is taking a private structure that we need to get inspected or certified or written off by some insurance company, that we're covered, God forbid, you know, the ceiling falls down when the girl scouts are in there doing something. You know what I mean?
But it was a private structure used by the public.
And it was the town.
But the public wasn't, it wasn't, public, public wasn't responsible for the liability if something went wrong.
Public didn't own the building. Public didn't own the building. Right, public owns the building.
Yeah, but they wouldn't insure us.
But they couldn't have acted as a church.
You can't insure it for anything.
No, 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 you can't. Not for public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
So I, okay, so are you looking for, like, the, our, I'm just trying to clarify this. Are you looking for our building commissioner to go back through again?
I'm looking for the requirements from a legal perspective as to what we need for that building to be used by the general public in any capacity, that the town isn't liable if something goes tragically wrong.
So, that could be a real cannon.
Well, that's why I'm trying to, like, because it's a historical building that it has its, you know, has its light fixtures and like the exits and all that stuff, but it's a historical building. So it doesn't have an elevator, it doesn't have that kind of stuff. But the building, the, we've had it inspected, and the building commissioner's gone through, and we have full insurance on it. So that's why I'm trying to, like, narrow down who you actually want to talk to on this can of worms. To, like, so that way you feel satisfied that it's good. You know, I'm just, I'm trying to narrow down where you want to go with this.
So I can speak a little bit about this because I worked closely with the insurance company when we took the ownership over, when the deed was finally reported at the registry of deeds. He asked us for every I to be dotted, T to be crossed before they, they would even accept this under the town insurance. So they asked for his report. They asked for specifications. I even think we gave him a copy of the ADA report.
They have a copy of the ADA report. They have a copy of the Aurelius, A-U-R-E-U-I-S...
However you pronounce it.
...report that did the survey. They have a copy of the letter from former Commissioner Lanciaani noting that it was pretty much as up to code as any...
Historical.
Any historical meeting house or church would be. But I cannot in full transparency say that that was not about purchasing the building because it, all of those documents were about purchasing the building. What I am coming forth today is just...
So maybe, so this would be my suggestion, is call the insurance company and ask what would be the complications on allowing the, either public or a town entity, and make sure you differentiate the two because they're going to have different answers for the two, on using this space. And then they'll give you the answer, and I bet you that answer will answer what Chris wants.
Yeah, I think that's, the other issue that we have is when we came to the agreement with the church of taking it over is that these two events that they had already scheduled...
Yeah, that's...
Would be kept.
Okay. Because the whole thing is, is the insurance may come back and say, yeah, no, you can't allow a private, even with their own COI, to come in, and they may say, no, that's not going to happen.
In an opinion from the patriarchs, is going to cost less than legal counsel. And if they do not know or see legal concerns, they are not scared to tell us, hey, you need to call your lawyer. So there's a chance that if you say, hey, Nate, go and call our insurance company and figure this out, that Chris then comes back and says, not, Chris is the name of the...
Insurance guy.
Insurance guy, that he comes back and says, I don't know, call your lawyer. So...
So what does this do for the groups you said are already asking to use it?
So one group...
And one of them sounds like it's for the holidays, so I don't know when this play is.
The audition for the play had been approved prior to us owning it, which we can 100% go back and say, hey, sorry, there are more rules than we thought there were. And the holiday musical event, while being a real bummer to have to cancel, it would be what it is.
What are the dates on those, Nate?
November 6th is the auditions, December 10th is the concert.
Did you say November 6th?
November 6th.
Well, realistically, the insurance company should get back to you within 24 hours.
Oh, they're going to get back to me probably while I'm...
To get all these answers because it's an insurance company. So they're going to tell you either that's a yes or no, and then they...
Well, our next meeting's November 3rd. What is that going to do to that group?
Well, if it's a yes...
I don't necessarily need the, the approval that I'm seeking. I just didn't feel completely comfortable acting within the authority that I have as Town Administrator without bringing that forward because optically, on a community basis, it would be, oh, why can so and so use it, but I can't. Then further, it's health and safety and code. So I wanted to bring it forward to the board just to kind of dot the, cross the t's and dot the i's to make sure we're not making any reckless decisions.
You know, and I think our motives appear here. I'm sure the people trying to, trying to use this building will understand that we want to make sure it's safe for everybody and that it's a building that can be used without, you know, somebody getting hurt and causing hardship for the town. So I'm sorry that, you know, it seems like the cart is the head of a horse here on a couple of these events, but I think we've got to get the ducks in the hole before we start opening this thing up to the public.
I have two personal requests. And this was based on knowing that there were groups already interested. And I'm, I'm biased, but as a retired music teacher, you, we, you have a grand piano in that hall that, and I played it, that is in great shape. You have an organ. I'm concerned about having groups coming in there, be they kids who are curious or adults who, oh, it's...
Mess with stuff.
Mess with, that, you know, this is, these are nice, good instruments. I, I hope, because I honestly couldn't say because when we were celebrating, everything was unlocked. Are there locks for the piano and the organ?
There is.
Because I would not want people, kids just playing with that.
I can talk to Carol. I do believe there is stuff to either rope off certain areas. There are locks on literally everything. You should see the box of keys I have upstairs.
Because we're going to go right through it, and that would be terrible to destroy those things.
So if not, if there are not locks on certain instruments and stuff, I know where to get them.
Yeah.
So I would...
Well, I would ask personally that before somebody goes in there with a group...
I can either contact Nancy Hubbard, Nancy Hubbard or Carol Whitney, who used to be the president, and just make sure, maybe go in with her one day and just see what we can rope off, what we can lock up, and how to keep the building itself safe and the contents within the building.
For example, is it a play or is it a musical that they're auditioning for?
It's a musical.
Because if it's a musical, they're going to need the piano.
She said they're bringing everything. I already, I made her give me every single piece of detail that she had for the event. So she said they are bringing everything. I don't even think they're doing it in this sacristy. I think they're doing it down in the hall.
Oh, well, I think they got a piano down there, but I have no idea what condition is. But the ones in, the ones in the main hall, they are still very, you said, very good.
Yeah, no, I already asked her. I said that the instruments in the building were off limits. And I asked her if what, what, do you need, what can I provide? And she said, no, we bring everything with us that we need.
Fine. Appreciate that.
I did let her know that the building is not ADA compliant in any way, shape, or form as well when I first spoke with her. I said, you need to be advised that it is not ADA compliant.
Yeah, because there's steps.
So we need to get answers and as quick as we possibly can.
Yeah, I would, I would call the insurance company to see, to make sure that everything is covered and that we can even rent it out to somebody that's not a town, even if it's for free, the allowed of use.
Well, I can't speak for Chris, but my, my, my leanings would be, if the information comes back in good time and everything is copacetic, that in my opinion, we let you...
If the information comes back and it's legal? Then I'm comfortable within my own authority to do so. I just didn't want to make that decision.
Gotcha. So, so Nate, not to be adversarial tonight, it feels like I'm playing that role really well. Which, which authority are you referring to that gives you the authority to rent out a town building? I, I'm just asking, right? So we looked through the charter, and the charter says, you know, you're responsible for oversight and maintenance, management, and so forth.
It wasn't rent, it was like disregard.
Okay. I just want to make sure, like, I totally agree, the charter's a strong charter. You have a lot of power and authority and so forth, but I think certain things rest back with the Select Board. And I think that's one of the few things that I would say unless something contradicts it, that probably rests in the hands of the Select Board.
I was trying to be nice to people.
I, I totally get it. So KP, I think the question was on the table from this side of whether or not you felt that in the event that the insurance answer came back, that we were good to roll if you were okay with them proceeding with...
These groups that are interested already.
That you pre-scheduled.
I am not.
Okay. So if it comes back, maybe we can do a spec, like a Zoom or something?
Well, no, okay, so...
I know that.
I know, I'm trying to narrow down what, what you're looking for just to try to get it moving because one is November 6th. And that one is, and I'm not saying that they should or shouldn't. It's just going to be a beast for them to find a new location at this point. And if they can't, then they need to go now.
I don't, I don't know enough about what I'm talking about to say what I want. What I want is for the building to be up to speed such that, probably like this building, right? It's up to speed, it has all the ADA needs. People who come in here are insured, they're safe. If anybody falls down the stairs here, I'm sure we have a policy on this building to cover it, right? If the roof falls in, we have a policy, right? Somebody tell me we have a policy.
Yes.
Yes, we have a policy.
Then I guess I would think as a public town building, the church should have the same such insurance policy. But since it's a historical building, I think we need to dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure that a historical building of that nature and the shape it's in is covered under our rider, similar to how this building is covered. So if anybody wants to go in and use it and God forbid there's an issue, it doesn't come back to the town. We're covered under insurance and or whatever, whatever we need to have.
All right, so that's basically what I asked for them to do.
So we're insured now for public use in that building?
Oh, we're insured now.
No, but there's a difference between, no, what?
No, there's a difference between what he's saying and what we're insured for. The building is insured. It is safe. I don't even want to put it out into the atmosphere. I hate that word.
Don't even say it.
Nope. I've watched them go multiple times tonight, so I'm not even going to say it. Something should happen, the building is insured. I will check with insurance tomorrow that it is insured for public use.
Yes, please.
If they come back and say, yes, it is insured for public use, what would you like me to go from there to do?
Let the public use it.
Let the public use it. Okay, because if you came back, I had a second proposal of if there's issues. The library basement hasn't been renovated yet, it is ADA compliant, and we can offer this space there as long as I talk to the library trustees about.
Would you like someone to make a motion, KP, that allowed them to move forward with this temporary policy in the event that Tricia gets an affirmative from the insurance company tomorrow? Would you like to hold?
I'd like to make, make a move on that policy. Make a motion.
Are you making that motion?
No, I thought you had.
Oh. I'll send it back over, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are you willing to accept the motion?
Did you type it up?
I, I'm, I'm on it, I'm on it. I'd like to make a motion that the, that we approve the proposed temporary, what is it, here it is. That we approve the use of facilities first meeting house temporary policy as proposed, pending affirmative response from the insurance company as to insurance coverage.
For public use.
For public use, thank you.
Motion made.
Second.
And second. Any further discussion or questions on this? And are you also clear?
Yes, I wrote myself, I know.
You get the go-ahead there. We're, this would give you the go-ahead here.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Uh, we're at that point now, public press questions? Or actually, any...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh, I will send you a written version of my report, but I would like to let it be known that it is my intent in 365 days to, to end my employment with the town of Hubbardson. I do feel as if there are just a little too many differences, and as much as I don't want to do it, I'm good. So December 1st, 2026, I will be ending my employment with the town of Hubbardson. Thank you.
That being the case, motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.